Okay, I mean for the purposes at least of our first agenda item and the select board does have full attendance right now. I'd like to call our meeting to order unless there's any objection. Alright, so for first item, I'd like to, I'd like to call this, I'd like to call a meeting together. And David, if you could read off the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is a consent agenda with the payroll warrant and meeting calendar with the next meeting date of July 18th, 2020. That's the Saturday advisory hearing. And then the following meeting is July 23rd, 2020. Next item is consideration of 2020 year-end transfers jointly with the Advisory Committee and Finance Director Town Accountant. The third item is consideration of town council appointment. Item four is 2020 annual town meeting. Subitem one is consideration of deficit spending for the month of August 2020. Subitem two is consideration of signing 2020 annual town warrant and decide whether it's split or full. Subitem three is consideration of venue for 2020 annual town meeting. Subitem four is consideration of treasurer's general obligation bond with Heidi Doyle Treasurer. The final routine items are consideration of administration items and routine business with Finance Director, Town Administrator, Select Board Member Report. The executive session agenda is to consideration to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the following exemptions. Item one, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and if the Chair so declares library and the Chair does declare. And item two, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations of town council contract services. And item three, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel Town Administrators. That's it.
Thank you very much, Chair. Alright, I'd like to move on to the first, oh, is there any public comment? Do we have any sign up, public comment? Okay. Okay, just on to the first. Oh, thank you. I took over easy last year. Alright, um, is there, is there a motion on the agenda?
So moved. Agenda as presented.
Second? Alright, roll call vote, all in favor, Paul.
Aye.
Uh, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Yes.
Very good, ah, nice to see you Chuck. Okay, so first agenda item is a consent agenda? Is there any comment or discussion on the consent agenda before we vote?
I move to approve. I move to approve the consent agenda.
So George, is Chuck a second on that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, Paul?
Paul votes aye.
Uh, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Don't ever ask. Okay, uh, agenda item number two, now this is a, um, also with the Assemblyman Advisory Committee. Is Stephen on the call? Yeah, is the, is the Advisory Committee Chair or Vice Chair?
Yes, so I'm on and it does look like we have a quorum, so, um, if I may, I would also, I would like to call the Assemblyman Advisory Committee meeting to order at 7:05 PM.
Please do. Alright. So on that note, we have, um, number two. Is there any comment? Uh, first we'll select board, then from advisory about the consideration of year-end transfers.
Do you have Sharon to, can Sharon present first and just kind of tell us exactly what's happening?
Yeah, please, Sharon, are you on?
Yep, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so this has been a, a work in progress, obviously, and, um, at this point in time, um, right now, we are looking at, um, transfers, um, to cover the deficits of 323,699. Um, those deficits, um, are in the select board, the finance department, town council, uh, town buildings, a very small amount in fire. Actually, I, I talked to Zach today and there's actually another amount that I'm gonna be able to pull out, so his, his variance is only 4,000. Um, there's a variance for Norfolk Agricultural, Minuteman Regional, CM&amp;D has a small variance and, um, the transfer station. So that, that's the total there. And we have, um, many departments that, um, had, um, operated the year, um, and had an excess, uh, as compared to their budget, so, um, we were able to cover all those deficits. Um, at the end of the year, we have a balance in our reserve fund after all the transfers of 154,781 and turnback, turnbacks including that, that reserve fund of 377,477. So everything worked out pretty well. And, um, I know that the department heads are here, um, to answer any questions that you might have as to why they exceeded their budgets.
Sharon, what did you say the turnback was? Cause the, what, the last one I'm looking at looked like it was a lot less than the number you just said.
Yeah, I actually, it was such a moving target, but at, right now, the turnback in total is 377,477,84.
Okay.
Which is.
You're gonna reduce, that wasn't, that includes for the fire department, like 7,800, I think that you're gonna reduce to 4,000, right?
Yes, exactly, they're down to, they're down to 4,000 now, exactly.
Yep, yep.
I'm looking spreadsheet now.
Yeah, it's, I think I sent out, I sent out four different versions, cause people just kept coming up to me and saying, oh no, was it too late? And of, you know, of course, it's not too late.
That's good, that's good. You did a great job.
Yeah, so yeah, it's, it's, I think everyone did a great job, so.
Yeah. The only thing I'm concerned about when you have that big of a turnback, I mean, the good thing is we didn't use the reserve fund. Um, it just means maybe we were over budgeting last year. And, you know, which means you're over taxing if you're having that large of a turnback.
I guess and no, cause I, I was looking at, I thought, last three years, most departments seem to have met their budgets and I'm, maybe it's a personal thing of me, I kind of get hesitant, just cause someone does good fiscal, you know, um, you know, adheres to the, comes under budget fiscally one year, I'm kind of against dinging them the next year. I think you have to look at three-year outlooks.
Well, and I would temper that with the COVID, because there's people, you know, people couldn't work, couldn't do a lot of things due to pandemic, so they weren't able to, um, you know, for some reason, you know, the library wasn't open. So they're turning money back because they weren't, you know, having as high utilities. There was costs that were much lower. Because all town buildings were closed, for example.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point, Jeff.
Yeah, I think certainly, um, from advisory standpoint, I think one of the things we'll have to do with, um, uh, next year's budget uh, season is to go through this list and basically try to nail down with each of these departments that were uh, under budget to figure out exactly why and, you know, whether it was a, you were over budgeted or this was a, you know, an anomalous year. Um, so I think we'll have our work cut out for us to, to, to figure out with each of these departments what, what the reason was, so.
And one of the biggest numbers was debt service and that's probably a, a factor of, you know, interest rate environment was so much better and, and I assume that's probably why the, so, so different.
So can I ask a question?
Please, Paul.
In this list of numbers that, that we're gonna vote to transfer and the deficits that the various departments have accrued, what's missing if for, for me, that would be useful is, are these, how do these numbers compare to the last years? So for example, police overtime, is that something that is stable, pretty much the same every year?
Yes, yeah.
Something that's increasing or decreasing? And the same with all these other numbers, are these? Like the ambulance, is that, is that a deficit that we're running into regularly?
No, the, what happened with the ambulance, Paul, is, um, in March and April, cause we get money for the revolving fund. We get revenue from transporting patients and because there was no one driving and no accidents, basically, in March and April this year, we had no, uh, EMT calls or virtually, I mean Zach's on here, he can give you the numbers, but we had greatly reduced revenue due to not, I mean, it's a good thing, cause we weren't transporting people that were either sick, but we had way less revenue, ambulance revenue from that.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Mangala.
And one of COVID costs pulled out of this budget?
Yes, absolutely. Everything's been pulled out and we set up a separate fund for that. The other thing to get to Paul's question about the overtime, it's consistently been about 100,000 a year that we have to fund. And next year, um, over, the overtime what, is going down by at least 100,000 because of the new staffing model. So you're gonna see a nice decline in overtime going forward.
Good, but is it gonna be increase in, in payroll to pay for the two officers?
Base pay.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, the same thing with community maintenance and development? The items here to be transferred, is, are these one-time things or is this, uh, something that's happening every year?
CM&amp;D, okay, um, what did it, okay, so under CM&amp;D, so you're looking at the 96,000?
Yes.
97, that's snow and ice.
On ice.
And that's, that's consistent, it's about 100,000 every year. We budget low, um.
Yes, I understand.
Yes, okay.
Cause there's a statute that allows us to deficit spend.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
As far as, um, the select board now, is there any, uh, motion or further discussion regarding these transfers?
I move to approve the transfers as presented.
Second?
Alright, uh, roll call in order I see him, uh, Paul?
Aye.
Uh, George or Olivia?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Uh, Steve, do you wanna take on the advisory vote?
Um, yeah, sure, uh, can I first ask if anybody from advisory has any questions or comments about the, um, year-end transfers?
I do, Steve, it's Jane. I'd, I'd like to understand for the budgets that are over budget, why they're over budget.
Yes, I think I would, I would like to know that as well. So I'm looking at the, the column, so I just wanted to be clear, Sharon, the, the red column are the, the departments that are over budget, right? So the select board is 80,000, the accountant is 11,9, et cetera, et cetera, yes?
Yes, correct.
Alright, would, would it, would it be okay for us to go, um, through each of those and hopefully their quick accountings of, uh, of, of the reason why, why they're over budgeted, just so that we can be clear? Um, so for the select board, what is, what is the, uh, the 80K?
Okay, um, um, they're keeping in about $50,000 in expenses that are associated with the library construction. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking maybe David can speak to that? Or Diane?
I would have to look at the detailed printout to see exactly what drove it over beyond whatever was budgeted. But it can be that something wasn't recorded in the right place and should have been under town buildings, not paid within our budget. And I didn't have time to go through, um, to look at all the detailed budgets. But I suspect that that's what it is, that some of the things could be, um.
My guess would be legal, legal.
I think you're, yeah.
Be my guess.
I think you're right, Jeff. It's legal fees that the town took on. And the other.
But just a question though, cause we do have a separate, um, item for legal fees though, right? Isn't that with town council?
Mm-hmm, right, and that's, Jane, that's always budgeted at the, whatever our retainer is, so that's gonna be pay over. It's been historically way over every year.
Well, particularly when we have litigation like the library and some other pieces of litigation, those are not part of the retainer. And, um, we actually bumped up the, um, the legal budget sum, recognizing it's still probably underfunded because of all the litigation expenses.
Uh, Jane, but I don't know how much of that is legal, legal spending within the select board budget. Um, that should be paid out of the legal budget, but we don't normally pay legal expenses out of the select board budget.
Diane, is Diane on? Diane, are you, you get the printouts every month, what, what? Do you know what, what's in, what, what you charge to that account?
I wouldn't put her on the spot.
Well, she does the coding for it.
But we can easily get a, a detailed printout if I had learned how to run this thing.
Well, I can certainly, I'm sorry, I can't do it now, but I can certainly do that. But we do send them out every month. Alright, um, and then the other, the other big piece was, um, information technology, the budget was only 20,000. We incurred 52,000. A big chunk of that had to do with the fact that, um, nobody was on Windows 10 and we were really at risk, so we had to make a major investment to upgrade, get everybody up on the, you know, up-to-date software and many computers actually had to even be replaced, so that, that was a big hit.
Okay, so that was all in the select, the selectmen total?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about the town accountant, the almost 12,000?
Town accountant, yeah, that was, um.
I just wanted to point out that this is the first year that the technology was in the select board budget. So we'll have a closer eye on it.
Okay, um, okay, so for town accountant, a portion of that had to do with, um, actually my salary being upgraded, um, mid-year. And that had not been budgeted, but that was based on that salary survey. So that's about 7,000. And then another piece of it has to do with, um, the fact that we are in, um, my, well, we were going to move the whole billing system over to Vadar. Um, so we made the investment in the software and then we kind of had to put a halt to it because of COVID-19. We couldn't get everybody on board with training and, so, um, we've made the investment, we're going to, we're, we're, we obviously are moving forward with quarterly billing. We wanted to move forward with quarterly billing on Vadar, but we had to kind of cease and desist, stay with point. And in March, we're going to make that migration, so we've made the investment and, you know, we, we thought we were gonna move forward, but it just didn't happen, so. So that's what, that's what that is.
Okay. Uh, town council, that's more or less expected, right? Because we, we pretty much always, we only budget the retainer, right? And so there's usually gonna be legal fees on top of that.
Right.
Exactly.
Um, town buildings, um, as, I don't know, Sean, if you're on here, do you want, are you able to give a, a quick overview of, uh, the, the general town buildings overage?
I don't know if Sean's on here.
That's his name.
Hi, this is, do you need Sean? Cause I can get him, I just need to call him, he's at the, um, fire department.
Oh, okay.
How much was the overage on town buildings?
Well, town buildings was 26 and CM&amp;D was almost 15, so in total, they're around 40, 42.
The CM&amp;D has to do with snow and ice, Steve.
Okay, but, okay.
I'm sure if I looked at the, the detail on the town buildings, that there are things that they have been paid up.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest, the biggest piece in town buildings is that fact that the clerk of the works was added.
Okay.
Um, and that wasn't budgeted, so that, that's the biggest piece right there.
Okay. Alright.
Now, fire, actually, it's, it's listed at six, but it's actually down to four.
Okay.
And that's.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk about that if you can hear me.
Um, yes, go ahead.
Zach?
Yeah, so, um, I think, as you may recall, back at the joint select board and advisory meeting in February, we discussed, uh, vehicle maintenance. Um, so our current line is, is 12,500, we're looking to bring that up to 18,000. I think we spent, due to some very unforeseen repairs, and for instance, we had one fire in which we incurred, because of ice damage, we incurred around $11,000 in damage to vehicles. Um, so the vehicle maintenance costs are, are a main, uh, reason for being over this year.
Okay. And then, uh, alright, we got Norfolk Aggie, Minuteman Regional, CM&amp;D, uh, transfer station, do we know what that 12,000 was?
Can we just go back to CM&amp;D for a second though? Because I, I think now when ice was fully covered in the supplementals, no? So that probably means that there is something else in CM&amp;D. Do we know? Why don't you shout it out?
I know that there were two, um, I, I'm assuming that the overage was, includes the salary lines, which we had two 30-year employees retire with, um, a lot of vacation on the book and they are the last employees that are entitled to a payout of their sick time as well. So, um, I just can't, I don't know how much those payouts were at their retirement, but I know that they were on FY '20. So I'm assuming the overage is in the salaries lines, but.
Well, it could be trees, another possibility, we had two big trees come down also. But Genie just texted that, uh, Sean's gonna get on, so maybe we can go through the other ones and he might be on by the time we get to the end of the list.
Um. And I assume the transfer station, Stephen?
Yeah.
Is that we've talked before about how much the cost went up for trucking? And I, I think those were way up this year, so I'm not surprised to see that. Um, the recycling cost was, was very high. We went through, based on our meeting that we had back in February, I think it was, we went in and the, the recycling committee has upped their fees on, on taking in things, so.
Yeah, I'd remember that.
In the future, so hopefully some of the revenue will offset some of the increased expense.
Yeah, actually for recycling, we are now spending more money to handle recycled materials than we are standard, uh, tipping fee at, uh, in Millbury.
And the state will not redo, will not back off on their requirements as far as what recyclable content in refuse.
Right. Yep.
Correct.
Alright, looks like Sean is on.
Were you just talking about transfer station?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
So we're getting wailed on that. I don't know how far you got, but we're probably looking at $4,000 a, three to $4,000 a month right now for the foreseeable future on, uh, on an increase on recycling. And, and I, I would guess we're gonna see that all next year.
Okay.
It came in pretty, it came in pretty late this year, that's why there's only about a negative 12,000. But we're gonna, I don't see any end in that.
Okay. And then Sean, um, are you able to give a sort of a brief summary of the, uh, town buildings and CM&amp;D overages? It's about 26,000 in town buildings and just shy of 15,000 for CM&amp;D?
Uh, only, only a little, but, I mean, the town buildings, I don't have a detailed report for year-end, cause we don't have one. But I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess the majority of it's electric. The electric rate's not what it was budgeted for. A year and a half ago, we, we, we tried to budget it right and we didn't, we didn't budget it right this year either, so I, I don't know what's gonna happen with the rate, but we're gonna get wailed on it. Uh. CM&amp;D, 24 hours ago, looked much worse, uh, but we shifted, there was a, there was a couple different, uh, blocks. So. The, uh, the major thing is some equipment repairs was over. Where we thought it was gonna be, several other things were under. Any specific questions on it?
Uh, no, I think, I mean, I think we just wanted to get an idea of what the things were that, that, that put you over, so. If it's basically a combination of little things, then, um.
Buildings, you guys know buildings is gonna be over every year, except that we, we, we brought it from the capital. So if you wanted it to come under, we could have taken some of it out of capital, but that, that's what we've been doing. We don't fuckin' operating budget on town buildings and we, we, we keep asking for capital, so that's what happened. If you wanna flush that to zero, you can't, there's extra money in the capital.
Well, Sean, the other part of the town buildings, which we talked about before you got on here, was the clerk of the works thing that happened earlier this year, so that's, I think that wasn't budgeted for, but came in that we voted on. So that, that's, uh, that's an important piece, that, that was non-budgeted, so I think that's why town buildings looks a lot higher than it was.
Right.
Um, alright, well, um, does anybody from, anyone else from advisory have any questions or comments? Um, alright, then I am gonna do a roll call for advisory votes. I'm gonna, unfortunately, you're not clustered together in the list here, so I'm gonna hunt and peck a little bit. Alright, so, um, first myself, I'm an aye.
You need, you need a motion first.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the, um, uh, year-end transfers?
So moved.
Okay, I can.
Alright, so, uh, myself, I'm an aye. Uh, Steve Leahy?
Aye.
Uh, Jane Materazzo?
Aye.
Uh, Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Brendan Daly?
Aye.
Uh, going down, going down. Oh, look, Natalie, Natalie's here again. Uh, was that everybody?
You got Peter Galatano.
Oh, yeah, Peter, oh yeah, there you go, Peter Galatano.
Aye.
Alright.
And, uh, Wassim, aye.
Oh, Wassim, there you are, right, you're Elani again, Wassim? Wassim Basali?
Yeah, aye.
Alright. So that is, uh, 70, 70 in favor for advisory.
Very good. I think that closes up into item number three. And there, uh, thank you very much. Our agenda number two, I apologize, agenda number two. Um, advisory members might be interested in our agenda item number four about the 2020 town meeting, if you wanna stay on. Uh, other than that, I'm gonna begin agenda item number, uh, three, consideration of town council, this is for the discussion. Okay.
Can we, sorry, can advisory adjourn?
Oh, sure.
Alright, can I get a, uh, motion to adjourn the advisory meeting?
So moved?
Second.
Uh, do I need to do a roll call on that too? Uh, alright, roll call, myself, aye, Steve Leahy?
Aye.
Brendan Daly?
Aye.
Peter Galatano?
Aye.
Wassim Basali?
Aye.
Jane Materazzo?
Aye.
And Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Alright, and, uh, advisory is adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on to agenda, agenda item number three, uh, consideration of town council appointment. Um, we are, uh, through a town administrator, we've requested, uh, solicitation of, uh, bids for, bids and, uh, statement of qualifications for other town councils to get an idea of what's out there. I've also requested an executive session item as to not compromise our contracting, uh, negotiation stance on this. So, and, um, um, short of that, short of anything to do with contracts, does anyone in the select board? um, short of that, short of anything to do with contracts, does anyone in the select board have any discussion items about, um, what's in a back-up material for town council appointment?
Uh, the, the only comment I would make, because I, we are in the process of negotiating a new agreement, is that we are considering, uh, splitting the retention to a labor employment piece, and then all other, uh, uh, legal services. But, um, again, I think the, any further detail, we should discuss in executive session, because we do have proposals of, for, um, from several law firms, but those should be discussed in an executive session.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Those will be made public after the board completely resolves the matter.
Yep. All right, if there's nothing else, then move on to agenda item number four. There's, uh, four parts of that, applicable to the twenty twenty annual town meeting. Um, the first, uh, part of it is, uh, consideration of deficit spending for the month of August twenty twenty. Uh, David, would, uh, would you or Sharon speak to this initially?
Um. Sure. Um, yeah, I've been in contact with, um, with my, uh, DOR rep. And, um, we have, until we have our town, annual town meeting, and until the budget for FY twenty twenty-one gets approved, on a monthly basis, we have to do a deficit spending approval. And what they recommend is you take your FY twenty twenty budget and take one twelfth of that, of that, which I've done, and then any, um, extraordinary items. And last month, we, we approved the middlesex retirement payment, the upfront payment. And, um, the select board also voted to approve, um, implementing the COLA effective July one. So the, the impact of that across all departments is thirty thousand. So, uh, one twelfth of our adjusted, um, budget for August twenty twenty is two thousand three sixty-five one nineteen.
All right. Okay. Uh, any discussion? Any motions?
I'm moved. No, go ahead, Paul. So moved.
Move to approve, Paul?
Move to approve, just to confirm.
Yes, yeah.
I'll second that.
Hi, it's Jackie. Sorry, I'm sorry. Can I hear, I have to certify this? So can I actually hear the, the, the full numbers? Well, you, I have to certify the exact numbers for the LS, so if I could hear, just hear the exact, the, the motion, the numbers in the motion, I would appreciate it.
So I think Paul, the move would be to approve, uh, um, two million three hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for Paul? So I understand it?
Yes.
You still second that?
Yes.
Okay. How's that sound, Jackie?
That's, that's fine. I'll let. Thank you.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna just do a roll call vote as I see them. Uh, Paul?
Aye.
Uh, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
Oh, no, yes, this time, and I will be yes.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Please.
Did our July budget get approved?
Yeah, we did that, we did that in June.
No, I know the board did that, but was it approved by the state?
Yes, it was. Yes.
Great, thank you.
The very next day.
Thank you.
Would you like me to forward you the approval? I'd be glad to have.
No, no, I just wanted to be sure that we're submitting these and we're getting feedback back.
Yeah, we got, within, within the next, the next day, we got feedback immediately, so that was great.
We also got reimbursement, I don't know if you wanna bring it up, but, you know, we got reimbursement from the CARES Act also. Is that correct, for around fifty-five thousand dollars, I believe?
Yes, yes, we did, yep. Um, yeah, I submitted, um, the, um, March through June numbers, and, um, they reviewed everything and they approved it. Um, and we got the electronic funds transfer of fifty-five thousand, so that was great. And now I will be working on, um, July through December. But my liaison from the CARES Act is, is really excellent, and we've got a good relationship, and he has lots of good questions and very helpful, so I feel confident.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's anything else, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, four I I, that's consideration of signing a twenty twenty warrant and decide if there's a split or a full. And I don't know if we can still do this, but you might wanna consider taking out order of the venue, because the venue might drive whether we split or do a full warrant. Like a Saturday in August on the football field, you might be, have a different decision than a September, or I know we have the data already set, but something in this, uh, DPW garage. I don't know if there's any discussion about that, if you wanna consider taking out order, because one might affect the other. Yeah, George?
I'm just, we, we've talked about, I was a little surprised to even see that the split warrant was on here again, because we, the whole reason we moved it to August in the first place was that we were gonna do one, one meeting and not bring people together twice. So I thought we've talked and talked and talked about not splitting the warrant, so I'm surprised that that's on here again.
Well, let's at least talk about the venue, because I think the COVID team might have discussed it. Jeff, did the COVID team talk about that at all?
We're prepared. I probably let, uh, Mary Wolf is on and Jackie, but we had a meeting today, and Chuck was there also at the, um, DPW with Sean and, uh, um, uh, Darrell Beersley was also there, Ellen Hartnett, uh, uh, Marion, uh, Neutra was there, and we went through all the options. So I, I'll let Mary, uh, take the lead here.
Before we go into detail about it, are people okay talking? I just wanna make sure we're going a little bit out of order, talking about four I I I right now.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, Mary, if you could, uh, talk about what, anything, any discussions you had about the venue?
Sure, so we, um, we all met at, the people you just heard, plus Addie May, um, met at the garage this afternoon at one o'clock. And, you know, I think different people came in with different ideas in the beginning, but I think by the end of the discussion, that we feel that the garage is a suitable venue for, um, August fifteenth. Uh, we did talk about moving the time from ten back to nine, just to, if it's cooler, it'll be better. Um, the, you know, my reservation all along has been about, um, ensuring that an appropriate number of voters can be accommodated in whatever venue was chosen. Um, you know, we have no idea how many people will show up. We, we know that there will be ten, or we can't have the meeting, but, you know, beyond that, it could be anywhere. We've had meetings that went up to four hundred, uh, for the last two years. Attendance has been two hundred and nineteen. And I'm guessing that we will have less than that, but, you know, it, I, I think we have to provide four hundred and fifty. Uh, we can probably fit just under a hundred in the garage itself. And if we set up some chairs on the end and outside, if we get more than that, I think it will be sufficient. The thing that, uh, pushed me over the edge, I had been very much in favor of Jamison Field, but, um, the, we would need a canopy there for sure, because it, it would be hot, and if the weather wasn't the greatest, we'd wanna be protected some from the rain. Um, but the canopy roof would not, we can't rent the Big Apple Circus, so, um, the canopy roof would have to be pretty low, and, um, the, the roof in the garage is very, very high, and there are fans up there circulating the air. Um, the other initial reservation I had about it was that it's open only on two sides. And, um, you know, to me, that isn't as good as having it open on four sides, but, um, by the time we left today, we also realized that on the two closed sides, on one of them, there is double doors to the outside. So if those are open, that will give you another, you know, air circulation. And then the final two doors, they go into another room, so they're, they're not open to the outside, but, you know, it's a, it's a little, little bit more circulation of air there. And Addie May did a great job of, um, plotting out where, uh, chairs could be put in the space to, to fill it. And, um, Sean talked about how he will keep the doors closed until people show up, and that will keep it a lot cooler. Uh, we think that we'll get some natural shade from the position of the sun on one side of the building, so that there will be shaded chairs outside for people who don't feel comfortable, um, being inside. Um, what am I leaving out? People who were there at the meeting?
Sean, I gave Sean, if he's still on, I gave him the name of a tent rental company that we've been looking at for Woodhaven, because we could also put, if we have to have overflow outside the garage, we could consider adding tents if we want to there as well.
Yeah, and I guess the, the one reservation I still have a little bit of, um, that would've made Jamison a little bit, uh, preferable, was there is more parking at Jamison. We, we have to make sure, and I, and I'm sure we can manage this, that, um, we're not doing double dipping on the space, that we're not saying, well, we can park fifty cars here, and then the next minute, we realize we're putting fifty chairs there, you know, so gotta be a little careful about that.
The other thing, Jeff, on that is, the point of having it at the garage is that we don't need a tent.
Well, yes, we're, we're just trying, see, the, one thing Jackie talked about is maybe doing a survey or next door, just to get some advanced sense of how many people are thinking of coming.
Yeah.
Right, but the last thing we wanna do is have to scramble if we get more people than we planned for, so.
Yeah, because that can be a safety issue if you have people clogging, you know, the, the entrance. You don't wanna have a backup there with people too close to each other. And you also have to, you know, set up an area for non-voters. You have to set up an area for people who refuse or cannot wear a mask, who, so we'll just call them the people not wearing a mask. Um, so, you know, there are details still to be worked out. Um, but on the whole, I think it's a suitable venue.
So my, my, my main question, I think my main concern is yours, Mary, is, um, having too low of a maximum. I think, I felt Dover's maximum of eighty was unacceptable on that there.
It was sixty, actually. Yours was sixty.
Was it, oh, was it?
It was, it was crazy.
They only got forty, though.
So I'd like to see something around two hundred-ish. What was your sense that a maximum could be, and I know you haven't plotted everything out, but is there some kind of sense of what a maximum would be in this venue?
I don't see two hundred people there.
No.
That would be, that would be a tough.
I think we could probably do one fifty, you know, out, expanding out the doors. Inside, you know, Addie May is on, she laid out some grids, maybe between eighty to ninety inside.
Yeah, I say eighty to ninety-five.
Bay doors are twelve feet wide, and they're two stories high, and they, there's eight bay doors.
The, the other thing, I mean, we can gain a little bit of, uh, usable space, depending on how many people we wanna set up as couples. So, you know, people residing in the same house, you, you don't need, you can put two of them.
Same bubble.
So I'll just, I'll just jump in real quick, if that's okay, to just preface, the grid that I plotted was done in five minutes, and it just took the basics, which is seventy-seven feet by eighty-four feet for the interior space, and then just plotting basic squares of six foot by six foot squares with two feet buffer around each, between each square, and that was roughly a hundred and ten squares fitting in. So clearly, if this is the location decided on, then we would do a much better, um, realistic mapping of, you know, what's really recent, you know, how many, can we really fit, and how, um, how many in the overflow, and how many parking, and so a lot more detail would be planned for, but, um, so I don't know if that maximum needs to be set tonight, but it's gonna be a real rough head start.
Not set, but I think getting an idea, like, if the maximum's fifty, I would just frankly vote it down, like, I wouldn't support.
I would not have suggested it if I thought it was fifty.
But it sounds like you maybe do one fifty with some outdoor stuff, and tents and stuff like that.
I, I think, I think you could squeeze, you know, without squeezing. I think you could squeeze a hundred and fifty there, you know, um.
It's the realm of reasonable. Turning people down is, is just the worst, and.
I don't think we can turn people down. I think that's just not acceptable. I would not have, Dover was going to call their meeting off if they went over sixty. I, to me, that's not acceptable. You, you bring people out, they come out to vote. They're, we're gonna make it possible for them to vote.
I'd like to recognize Paul, if you're looking to speak.
Hi, yes, I've been to four outdoor town meetings now, and every one of them had more people attend than was projected. I had one town meeting that was, a Saturday morning town meeting that was supposed to start at ten. They were estimating between sixty and eighty people. They ended up having three hundred. Uh, it was a nice day. What?
Did they have a particularly contentious article, or?
We didn't realize it was a contentious article, but in fact, there was one that people wanted to talk about, and they debated it. But the whole meeting covered twenty-seven articles. It was an hour and a half, of which an hour was spent waiting for the three hundred or so people to be checked in at the town clerk's station. We had, because we had projected a long number, we had only two stations to check in. And that caused a, a long line of people waiting. So I would urge you to plan for more than what you're projecting, since every one of these town meetings had more than was projected.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Sean, please.
So we, we've looked at this a couple times. I just wanna make one point, that as we talk to limit at the garage, most people on this call have been to the garage. The, the same thing that's gonna limit the garage will limit the field. Um, e- even if we put a canopy at the field, you'll only fit, you won't get a canopy as big as the garage, it's sixty-five hundred square feet, so just, it, you could, you could fit hundreds of people in the parking lot, just like you could fit hundreds of people at the field. So the theory is, well, what could limit that? Rain. Well, if it rains and you're out on a field, you're done. You're gonna, you're gonna shut it down and come back the next day. That may happen if you don't plant enough under a canopy, whether, or you don't plant enough under the building. The building gives us the best opportunity to control the environment to some degree. There's certain things we can't control. A hurricane could come up, the East Coast, August fifteenth, but we can certainly control a few things. We can handle rain, which we really can't handle in the, in the field. Uh, so we, we get the best opportunity. We certainly can handle two hundred and fifty people at the garage. That doesn't guarantee they can go, can all get in, but they certainly can't get in on Jamison. Um, so I, I would just caution that. I think, I think, like everyone said, we can probably get between a hundred and a hundred and fifty people in the building, or just adjacent to it.
Yeah.
As we lay it out, we're gonna probably look at an overflow tent if we think we need it. That'll be adjacent to the building, and, and certainly anyone that's been there feels like they, you'll, you'll get as good a perspective from just outside the doors as you do just inside the door. You can see, you can be heard, you can have a microphone. Uh, and we can certainly control the environment and the sound system better indoors than we can out in the middle of a small field.
And on, and, Mary, my, I have a question, so I'm sure we can do the audio, video, or visual, uh, whatever, the, um, you know, the audio, uh, fine on this. Uh, can we still use the, uh, remote buttons?
As far as I know, yes. Other towns have used them successfully outdoors.
Okay, so I think that's.
And if they can use them outdoors, you can use them indoors.
It's, it's Jackie. Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, please.
Um, the, the, um, electronic voting things have a range of two hundred and fifty feet radius. So we don't need, you know, Wi-Fi or anything like that to, to use them, but that, that's what I was told by the vendor.
Okay, we might push that. We might push that to fifty. Gotta make sure the vendor's sitting in the middle. Probably, I wouldn't surprise you if you got a five-hundred-foot diameter in this. Um, okay, that's good from my point, because we spread out town meetings. I think the voting can be complicated, and I think that helps it. Um, so far, I'm being sold. I support, yeah, um, DPW Garage. Are there any thoughts from the select board on yea or nay on this? I don't think we need to vote to simply get a consensus from us. So do we have to vote on this? Is this something we actually vote on?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Because we have to put it in the warrant. The grant we issued has to say, where is the town meeting?
And what, and what time? So, and, and frankly, we, we need time for planning, so, yeah, you guys need to just, you really need to decide tonight.
What are the thoughts from the select board? I certainly support this venue, and even support a nine AM start.
I do, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I would move that we call a town meeting at the DPW Garage for nine AM at, um, August fifteenth.
Okay, anything else?
You want to make the rain date also?
Good idea. What was the thinking of the group that met?
Originally, we had a.
We didn't discuss the rain date.
Yeah, need a rain date with the DPW Garage, you think?
Yeah.
You might as well vote for one just in case.
I don't think it's a rain date. I think it's if we run out of time, but starting at 9:00, starting at 9:00 in the morning, God forbid if we needed a second day.
It could be a hard.
So what about Sunday at 1 o'clock?
That was our rain date the last time we voted, so that makes sense.
All right, so that's your motion, Paul. Saturday at 9:00 and Sunday at 1:00 for a rain date. Okay, is there a second?
Addie May, two things. One, Addie May just typed, calling it a rain date will stop people from attending if it looks cloudy.
The way the rain date works is that somewhere around 8:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, if we're gonna call it, we post it on the town's website. And we tell people, we're not having a meeting today. Unless that's posted there, we're having the meeting.
Who calls it? Mary?
Yeah.
You're calling it? Okay, private advisement, yep.
I don't know, it looked like Darryl was trying to chime in with some feedback, cause she was with us today to provide this sort of sleek guideline.
Yep, so everything, I think, looks reasonable there. No place during this COVID-19 thing is going to be perfect, but I think there are good things. One other kind of air circulation feature that's possible is that the fire department has fans that we could use to help circulate the air within the building if we feel that's needed. So the other thing is, I'd just say, think about, I'm not sure I would be as comfortable with if we get 300 people showing up, or even 2 to 25 and feel like we can fit them in the space, but it is gonna mean people being closer together drives up the risk, you know. So I'd just say, give a little thought to how we would manage that. Or I heard Shaun mention, you know, look into even some additional tents to set up if we need, or something to accommodate those folks without compromising the safety measures that we decided on while we were there today.
Understandable. And that's a good buffer number.
All right, Ms. Jackie, but we had, we had discussed today setting up chairs outside as well.
No, but that was to get up to the 150, so if you get 200 plus, then, you know, is it gonna work? But they'll know better too when Addie May gets a chance to really lay it out more accurately. So that might change our number perspectives, but I'm thinking about what Paul said, and they were surprised. Sounds like they had space, they just didn't have the setup to process the folks. We have a space issue, potentially.
One thing on the fans, there are six ceiling mounted fans in the garage, which are very high up, but these fire department ones are, would be supplemental and are electric ones, quieter electric ones.
It does sound like we're still in good shape based on what Shaun said, what our availability would be on Jameson, or whatever the field was, you know, the other field there. I still think we're far better off in this venue and support that. Fact is though, we do have a motion without a second on the table there.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion at this point?
Can we require Shaun to show up early and make coffee for everyone?
He'll probably make the, he'll probably talk to Mary about making the call on the rain dates. That's enough stress right there.
Okay, well, we don't need to amend our motion then.
Paul, how do you vote?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And Chuck?
Hi.
I am, yes. Okay, now, as I've been reminded, we have, we have 4ii, consideration of signing it, split and full. We did vote for a full town meeting to be held in this August. I'm assuming we're staying on that track. I spoke to John Hegley a little bit earlier this week and Planning Board would like to see the zoning articles go on, not be delayed. Is there, is there any more discussion on that, or do you want to vote on the? Paul, please.
A full warrant works best if we have an expanded consent agenda. So I want to urge the moderator to do a full warrant consent agenda. By that I mean, the moderator reads out the titles of all of the articles. And unless a number of voters ask for a hold on that article, then there's one motion to approve all the articles as recommended by the Planning Board or the Advisory Committee as printed in the Advisory Committee report. And with that one motion, what I've seen at other town meetings, usually the whole budget gets approved without any discussion. Usually, a number of these zoning articles, voters just don't want to sit and listen to numbers and they don't want to sit through long zoning discussions. So you find that many of these, what you would expect to be the lengthy issues at town meeting, can be disposed of fairly quickly if you use that method. If we don't use that method, if we call every article, then have a discussion about every article and every subpart of every article, so that every capital project needs to be separately discussed. We go through all of that, that prolongs town meeting. And ultimately, what I've seen from these consent agendas is that that's not what the voters want. They really don't want to sit there and listen to discussions on items that everybody's pretty much in agreement on. And they don't need the long explanations. Where the explanation should come is to have a virtual town meeting pre-session chaired by the moderator and have all the presenters of all the articles speak and say what the articles are about, have advisory explain their thinking on each of the articles, answer questions that the public might have. That is, it should be an interactive presentation, so that people who want to understand, you know, why did the budget for room closets go up by 20%? You get all those questions answered remotely through a virtual town meeting. Then when you get to the actual meeting in-person part, that part, it's clear the laws say that's where the voting has to take place, in person. That's why we can't do the entire meeting virtually. But if we have, let's say, the week before August 15th, we have a two or three hour session where we go through all the articles and we have that recorded and running on cable continuously, when we get to town meeting, you'll find a consent agenda will work very well. People's questions have already been answered, they feel comfortable with things, they don't need to listen to people repeat what they've already said, and you can move this thing along fairly quickly.
And Paul, just educate me for a second here. Is it at the sole discretion of the moderator, has the what goes into a consent agenda?
Well, I'm suggesting the entire warrant. So rather than leaving it to her discretion, I'd ask her to call every article in the warrant and see what the voters want, rather than the moderator making that decision.
And just rattle off the, name off the articles and see which ones have a pass, which ones want to basically be discussed?
Yes, and you'll find you're down to three or four articles. That's where the discussion should take place. And that's where, in one of these town meetings, we didn't realize it was a controversy, but some people had felt upset about a particular project that wasn't on our radar. And that's where the discussion took place. So that gives the voters a chance to talk about what they want to talk about and what they came to talk about, rather than us forcing them to sit through. I had one voter say that listening to the budget was like somebody reading a telephone directory to them. It's just a whole series of meaningless numbers. They know the budget has to be balanced. They have faith that between advisory and the selectmen and all the department heads, everything's been looked at, everything's been vetted. They don't need a detailed explanation to, you know, why we're buying 12 paperclips in one office and six paperclips in the other office. They don't want that.
Okay, I definitely get that. Is, between Mary and the board right now, limit, just discussion out, is there any discussion of what Paul is suggesting?
Mary's experienced and she has a lot of thoughts on it, but one question I had for Paul is, do you have to split it into several consent agendas? Because some of the planning items require a two-thirds vote and other ones are only a majority vote.
Well, and it's even more than that because the unpaid bills requires four fifths.
So the whole principle behind a consent agenda is, there's no opposition. It's usually unanimous vote. But that leads to this more subtle question of, is how many voters are necessary to hold an article? And some moderators believe any one voter can hold an article and discuss it. Some moderators are taking the position it should be like a motion and a seconder, so there's two people. And the town on NADIC has took the position that there ought to be seven.
The NADIC is a representative meeting, of course.
Yes, but the point is that seven comes from the rule for challenging a moderator's decision. So they thought it was a convenient number and indicated that there was a real issue here, not just one, one guy who had a question, you know, didn't want to bother to listen to the, the recording of the pre-town meeting, wants to bring up the same things. The idea is to make sure that the voters get what they want.
And those rules are set by the moderator as to how many motions, seconds, seven votes, whatever it is?
Yes, usually the moderator asks for unanimous consent at the beginning for rules of the meeting. And that's where the moderator can put in all of this. And as to Mary's comment about different votes, again, it's gonna be unanimous vote across the board. But if you require seven and there's, there's only 12 people there, then you may very well want to have a consent agenda that would include the financial piece as one consent agenda and then maybe the zoning piece as a second. But I think we'll be well, whatever number we reach as necessary to make a hold, I think there'll be well in excess of that at this town meeting.
Mary, what are your thoughts?
So I'm not ready to make a decision on this tonight, but my thoughts going into this are that we normally have a consent agenda for items one through eight. That's everything that precedes the omnibus. Then we had the omnibus, then we have the capital articles. They're all probably, I don't know if they will be borrowings or not. I assume at least most of them will be borrowings. They will require two thirds then. And people may have feelings about the capital articles, I don't know. Then there's another group of articles that I think could be grouped together in a consent agenda. And then, and possibly including in that two of the planning board articles, which are pretty much housekeeping, two of them, but they do need two thirds. But then the, the open space article and the inclusionary zoning article, there may be discussion about that. People may want to pull those. You know, I'm, I'm not ready to commit to a one consent agenda tonight.
I wouldn't expect, frankly, to vet the details right here and right now. Just I want to see what it would take to kind of streamline this and what it takes before, you know, time's running out. Based on the discussion we've had with Paul's suggestion of like one or a few consent agendas and Mary's discussion there in the select board, is there any thought on splitting rather than going our previously voted on full town meetings? Do we want to stick to what we currently have planned based on some of these ideas that have been kicked around?
I, I think we should stick with what we have. That's why we moved it to August. We don't want to gather people more than once. I think we should go through, you know, we have the warrant pretty well set and I think we need to keep it as it is. And as much as Mary can group it, kind of leave it up to her to see what makes sense.
And I tend to agree with that. Does anyone else have thoughts on this?
Yeah, I thought the rationale we had for not splitting the warrant before made sense and I don't see any reason to change it. So I, I thought we decided this, so.
All right.
One other point I'd make, Eric, is that I'm not sure when we have to decide how to bundle it in consent agendas, but we have the all-day advisory hearing where we actually go through the warrant. So we'll see where we get feedback on the advisory hearing. It's all Zoom, so it's, you know, people can challenge it there, but.
Right, but we don't, we don't set that, Mary does.
No, I know, but it just may be an indicator if there are ones that seem contentious if we get a lot of comment at an advisory public hearing.
Next on the 23rd, right. And that might be what Paul talked about, vetting, that could serve as that vetting meeting at that time as well. All right, I don't want to belabor this, since, since it does look like we're changing our, our vote that we previously made. I'm ready to move on in this one here and we can discuss further after 23rd. And if Mary can come with some ideas, Paul suggests, and group into the.
I think we need to vote on the, we need to vote on the actual warrant tonight, though.
Okay, is there a motion on the actual warrant?
I'll vote to sign the warrant as, as it is presented in our packet.
So I can, just a question.
Paul, discussion.
Did the aggregation article get included on the warrant? And did the new planning board version of the open space, I believe it was, did that get included in the warrant we were about to vote?
I'm not sure. David and Diane, do you know in our background material we're voting on, I saw.
Yeah, sorry, the aggregation article's always been in there, so I don't know why there's a question. It's been, it's never been suggested that it was removed, so.
Okay.
It was revisions made, I know. I think it was to the open space article.
Sorry, this is Marion, I have a question. On the warrant that you have in your packet, we have a version of the open space subdivision article that should have been resubmitted two days ago. The date would be July 7th, I believe. Could you tell me what date you have on the version that you have in the current warrant?
I'll have to look to David or Diane on that to see what, what actually got included in here.
I just have to be sure that the warrant that's signed is the latest version.
I saw your version roll in a couple days ago. I don't know what made our background material.
This is Jeannie. Marion, I forwarded the, the select board your article from the 7th that Jeannie had sent to me and that's what I've put into the current warrant.
Oh, perfect, Jeannie, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Jeannie.
Absolutely.
All right, so it looks like we have a motion and a second and we've taken care of Paul's concerns here. I'll take a roll call vote to accept the warrant as submitted to us. Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Chuck?
Yes.
And I will be an I.
Great.
Okay, thank you for all that. The final item here is 4.4, 4.4, whatever, IIII. Consideration of Treasures General Obligation Bond. Is Heidi on here?
Yes, I'm on.
Hey, do you want to speak to this?
Sure, I've included in your packet a timeline for doing a general obligation bond and which would be combining the article items that we did in 2018 and the ATM 2019 and going from our short-term borrowing into putting. And, uh, going from our short-term borrowing into putting it a long-term borrowing, and again, we'd be going by a certain number of years. What I want to discuss is what amount of the library building borrowing amount should we be including in this? Because we know you don't want to long-term bond something till it's complete, we did long-term bond the first million dollars that we had, we now have, um, borrowings of 2.046752 out. And we can bar- bond all of it, we can bond 1.5 million in short-term bond. I don't have a, I mean, my gut sense is that we would probably be using this full amount, but I wanted to get your feedback.
And my sense, and also let's talk to, um, look to Jeff on this one here. No matter what we're, I think we're in it for that much amount of money and no matter what we recover on, uh, you know, post, uh, post-project litigation. Uh, Jeff, what's your, what's your thoughts on this?
Yeah, that's what I would agree, and I, you know, I'm not sure necessarily, we ended up doing some transfers when we did the, um, uh, uh, takeover agreement, they actually gave us some, some money, I think it was around $230,000 or something, I don't know. I'm not sure that I would change anything either.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, this is separate, Heidi, we have the, um, separate bond for the, uh, Mass Library, you know, the, the payment we'll get from the state at the end of the, uh, one year after.
Right, right, that, that is a state grant anticipation, I can only short-term borrow that, and that, we just did that one, that's on a different cycle.
It should be good because we're now, uh, the new takeover agreement is a February 1st substantial completion date.
Okay, it's a question of whether it might be up to one year after, sometimes, so we might have to renew that one again for short-term.
Yeah, they're giving us some, they gave us, I think, the last one a little bit early.
Right, so we'll, we'll see, but, so is the feeling that I should put the full 2. something million into this long-term bond?
What is long-term, what do you, how far out are you going?
Uh, the recommendation that it seems to be right now is 20 years.
Yeah, what are rates right now, because, uh, you know, the feds have dropped rates so drastically, are we seeing that, um, on our, our rates right now?
Not as much, what I've seen, uh, the recent one that just came out this week of the, uh, long-term borrowings range from mid-ones to mid-twos. And it was all over the board on triple As, As, you know, and different sizes, there was no continuity, no pattern. Uh, some people get better offers and, uh, more, more bids, we, we somehow, we don't seem to attract the big players, I guess, like Mellon Bank or some of those, but, um, I'm hoping we'd at least be in the twos, which is still very, very good for long-term borrowing.
Yeah. And a 20-year, it's not a simple obligation.
No, so if, if we do the full amount, um, where we'd be at on the one column, 4.604811 amount that we'd be looking to bond.
In 2.046752?
If we add that into all the other items, so one of the pages, I listed all the items, and I had two bottom numbers of 4, 4.6 million, 4.0 million roughly on those. So if we added the full 2 million in, we're looking at, uh, doing a higher amount. Um, then I also had included the timeline of what we'd be doing, um, we would have to go for another rating with standard and four. Probably what I would do is, um, have it be on one of your meetings here at the end of July with an update. And what we'd be going, standard and four would be doing probably in the beginning of August, the conference call, if anyone wants to be on it, they'd, I'd be happy to have anyone else in it, if you want feedback, maybe just to let you know what we'd be discussing.
If anyone's interested.
Yes, so, and the sale would be then at the end of August, um, I'm switching this a little bit on our payments and when, I'm switching interest and principal because especially with going quarterly taxes, I don't wanna have, right now, all of our borrowing is geared towards principal payments are due in May, interest payments are due in November, and I'm trying to, to divide this up a little bit.
All right, well, I think, Board, is there any discussion or motions with the board?
I, I would just like to have a motion to move forward with the attached list, including the full amount of the library short-term borrowing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I heard it from George first, but whatever the notes say, George or Paul moved, Chuck seconded, I'll take a vote, Paul?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
And I'm a yes.
Thank, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Heidi. Okay, the last, uh, item is, uh, just for, um, administration items, a routine business. Uh, finance director, Sharon, do you have anything additional?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
How about David?
No, I'll sit, thanks.
Okay, any board members?
No.
Nope.
All right. So I'll take a motion to adjourn and I'll read, hey, George, help me out, do I read this?
Go to the next, go to the second page of the agenda and read that.
Yeah, so I read this part before they motion to adjourn. A motion is needed to adjourn to executive session not to return to open session for consideration of the following items. Item one, MGL 30A, section, uh, 21A subsection 3, to discuss strategy respect to threaten potential litigation, it's an open town meeting, we have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and as the chair so declares, and I so declare, the library. Item two, MGL 30A, 21A subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations of town council contract services. And item three, MGL 30A, 21A subsection 2 again, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel town administrator. Is there a, uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, I'll do it in order that's on here, Mr. Yon?
Aye.
Mr. Durensis?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Morrell?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson, I am aye as well. Okay, we're now, um, entering executive session, um, if we can turn off the recording.